It is 5:30 ladies and gentlemen, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thanks for being here for our November Board of Commissioners meeting. I know we've got a pretty packed agenda, so we'll try to keep things flowing and keep things moving. Do you want to say it's shocking to believe that we're a week and a half away from Thanksgiving? Because this year is flying by really, really fast, but excited and hope everybody has great plans with their families to enjoy that. I'm going to ask Kirk Anderson if he'll lead us in the invocation and prayer, and following that, Mr. Philip Dean, if you'll lead us in the public beliefs.
Thank you, Heavenly Father, for letting us get here. Thank you, Lord, for this community. Please, Lord, watch over these proceedings. Please, Lord, watch over our leaders. Lead us. Let them lead us in the way that you would have us do. Please, Lord, watch over all of our people who serve our community, both at home and abroad. Let us go in the way you would have us do. In the name, we pray. Amen.
Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
One other thing I didn't mention as I was making announcements is we did have a very big election in our county just a short time ago. Record numbers for Pickens County, over 20,000 people. I say that because I want to brag on our election staff, all the poll workers, all the volunteers, Miss Stacy Godfrey and the Board of Elections for the phenomenal job they did. She's not here, so I can actually brag on her. I will do it when she's actually sitting in the room, but they did a fantastic job keeping things flowing. So I do want to make a huge thank you to them for all the hard work that they put into that. And we will go through the agenda. I know as we get into the approval of the agenda, I do have one amendment under new business item F. It's a consideration and approval of allowing the Development Authority to transfer escrow account funds into a primary account. That's one account that they have that they need to transfer the funds from there. And if we can add that to our agenda, that's the only amendment that I have.
That's the only one?
That's the only one. With that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second? Second, any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
With that, we will go through our agenda. We don't have any employee recognitions from the concept of years of service, but we do have Ms. Krista Eastwood that's here from our 911 center. I'd like to have her make a presentation.
Again, thank you, Board of Commissioners, for giving us this opportunity. The Employee of the Quarter was also our Employee of the Year, as voted by his peers, Mr. Mason Robertson. He answered 19% of all of the 911 calls for third quarter.
What a call. You want us to stand behind you? Got one more, though. Sorry, I'm a little slow. Thank you. Congratulations. One of my dear, dear announcement, dear, thank you, Mike, with a good page and all the things that he did. So I thought she was going to give us the full presentation there for a moment. Very good. Thank you. Under our consent agenda, we did have quite a few proclamations since we last met. You can see in here that we had the Red Ribbon Week proclamation, the National American Heritage, Indian Heritage Month proclamation, National Family Literacy Day proclamation, National Hospice and Pellet Care Month proclamation, and the Daughters of the American Revolution and Service to Veterans proclamation. It seems like the month of October and end of November every year does seem to pile up. But want to make sure that those are recognized in the agenda so that we can get those on the record. And thank everyone for all the work they do to make those possible. The next portion of our meeting is we're going to open up a public hearing. Public hearing is our first presentation of the budget. This will be one of two full presentations. We'll do one tonight, and then during our work session on December the 2nd at 4:30, we will go through the presentation again for those that are not able to be here tonight. So that way, we can make sure to present the 2025 budget. We'll go through that information hopefully in a timely manner. And since it is a public hearing, we will pause afterwards for any public comments, any questions that others may have, and then we'll close that public hearing out and move from there into the rest of our meeting. I will be going through and doing the presentation just to kind of give you an overview of how we're going to weigh that out. We're going to discuss our mission moving into 2025, the proposed 25 budget with the county funds, high level overview, general fund details with revenue and expenditures so that everyone can kind of get a good picture of what that looks like. I think one of the most important things to understand why we have the budget is to understand why we're trying to accomplish what we're doing, and that's to provide a transparent local government focused on consistently protecting our community and its values while working towards values-driven growth and the greatest quality in life for those that choose to make Pickens County their home and destination. The ways we accomplish our mission is to take a look at our staff. And the reason this is kind of important, I believe one thing that makes a Board of Commissioners budget process a little different than any other municipality or most other budgets is we also have to fund several other elected positions as well. If you look in green in the middle section underneath the Board of Commissioners, you'll see those are the departments that do fall within the span of control of the Board of Commissioners. Over to the right on the blue side is the elected constitutional officers. In the left, you have our judicial staff at the top. That's got our Judicial Circuit, and it's Superior Court, and Juvenile Court, and the District Attorney's Office. Below there, you have the boards and authorities that are appointed by the board. Now, not every one of those have a budget per se. They are boards that function, but several do have budgets. For instance, you have the Elections Office that are funded through the county. Health Department has funding. And the Tax Assessors Board also has funding. And the Development Authority, we have an IGA with them to provide funding. So this is just kind of give an explanation of even though we're doing one budget presentation, it's multiple budgets that are combined into one budget. For anyone that wants to review the entire 2025 budget that has the line item detail, it will be available in the Court's Office as of today. It's in a binder in her office. Anybody can come and review it while it's in the pending process. Once it's voted on and approved, it'll then be made publicly available on the website. So until any adjustments get made, we want to make sure that we keep that pending. This kind of gives you the overview of our mission, who all fulfills what our mission is underneath our direct control. We have our administrative offices and our public safety offices. Those include Buildings and Grounds, Parks and Recreation, Finance, Public Works, Human Resources, Recycling and Solid Waste, Planning and Development, Water Department, and Communications and Special Projects. Under Public Safety, we have the Animal Shelter, Marshal's Office, Emergency Management Agency, Fire and Emergency Services, and then Emergency 911. All fall within there. So all those separate budgets are contained within the information that we're going to get through and present. In order to accomplish the budget or accomplish the mission, we do have to fund each of these items. And so we're going to go into 2025 and take a look at how we plan to do that. Some of the highlights as we come out of 2024. The one of the top ones that we're very proud of as a board and as a staff is that we've not had no utilization of a tax anticipation note, a TAM. That was a loan that was typically used to fund county government for many, many years. This is now our third consecutive year where we've not borrowed a penny to function the office. So '22, '23, and '24, we've been able to operate county without having to operate on borrowed funds. We're ahead on most of our revenue categories. We usually try to budget very conservatively within our revenue and conservatively on our expenditures. We are ahead in our revenue categories, and most of our departments right now are operating at or below their budget regarding expenditures in 2024. I know we'll do the quarterly report later in this meeting, and you'll see where we're at in the year. New administrative software for finance has been fully implemented, and it replaced three antiquated systems prior to. And that's been a fun transition that all of our staff has loved very, very much. Unassigned general fund balance of $13,148,785 was carried forward in 2024. That makes up 36.56% of our overall budget for operating revenues. One of the reasons that's important is to understand that we collect taxes at the end of the year, but our budget is operated on a fiscal year. So we fund 40% of our budget at the last three months of the year. So we have to make sure that there's a healthy fund balance. That's how we've been able to keep that tax anticipation note from having to be utilized by operating with that fund balance. Looking countywide, that goes back to what I showed just a couple moments ago with the slide of all the elected officials and the Board of Commissioners and everything. There are 337 full-time employees that work for Pickens County, 45 part-time employees, and 179 seasonal or temporary employees. That seasonal and temp includes all your poll workers for elections. It includes all of your referees for all sports activities, your umpires, your officials, several of the coaches and different people that participate with the recreation requirements. So that makes up in lap guards the seasonal and temporary employees. The proposed 2025 budget, as we go in and take a look at our county funds, there are six significant county funds, and then there's four other secondary funds, four other county funds. Secondary is probably not the appropriate term. The six funds, if you can see as we've got them listed here, the General Fund, which is the primary account. You also have two enterprise funds, both water and airport. Those are both due under our enterprise, meaning that they should fund and function and operate themselves from the revenues that they generate. Judicial Grants is a separate fund so that all the grants that are received to fund judicial processes, not just for Pickens, but for the circuit that are then reimbursed from the other counties for their portions. The E911 has a separate fund. SLOSS also has a separate fund. So we'll kind of get through those. Four of the other funds that are included that are not as large, and we'll get through the totals on those in a moment, is the Family Connections Fund, where we fund a Family Connections office through a grant program there. Hotel Motel Socks Fund, which is taxed as collected from rental properties. Jail Construction Fund and Sheriff's Office Speed Detection Fund. It's required to be kept in a separate fund for any revenues that are captured there. So it's included separate in the way we're presenting it. So here's kind of the high-level overview. The General Fund's the chief operating fund of the county. That's where the bulk of funds all go. I think that some of the offices refer to it as the black hole. It's just the way it's described from time to time. Funded operations include all Sheriff's Office, law enforcement, jail operations, school security, courthouse security, fire and rescue, the courts, emergency management, parks and recreation, code enforcement, health and human services, and general government. The General Fund's supported by revenue derived from taxes, licenses, permits, charges for services, fines, and other sources. For 2025, the total general fund revenue and expenditure as a balanced budget is at We'll go through and kind of break down where those revenues come from. The Water Fund, Enterprise Fund, that the accounts for the operations within the Water Department. Those enterprise funds are used to account for government operations that are financed and operated in the same manner as private enterprises. Water Department supplies customers with water, access to water. And Pickens County Water Department does not provide sanitary sewer services. If you look within the Water Fund for the 2025 budget, it's $3,780,861. Airport Fund, one of the other major funds we described a moment ago, is an enterprise fund for operations at the airport. Those funds are used to account for all operations and finance for, similar to a private enterprise as well. Airport's operated under the direction of the Pickens County Airport Authority, who's appointed by this board. And the Pickens County Airport sells fuel and leases plane hangars to generate the revenue to offset the expenses that they have. The airport budget for 2025 shows at $1,370,753. Our fourth major fund that we're going through is the Judicial Grants Fund. It accounts for the operations of a number of court-related programs in the Appalachian Judicial Circuit. The Appalachian Circuit is comprised of Fannin, Gilmer, and Pickens Counties. You'll see the expenditures for this total program that show up within the line items, but it's also offset by revenues that are reimbursed from either the grants or from the other counties in both the General Fund and the Judicial Grants budget as well. Court-related programs include the Veterans Court, Juvenile Court, CASA, Victims Program, pre-trial and probation, Drug Court, and Mental Health Court. Those are some programs that are offered through there. Under the Judicial Grants Fund, there's a total amount of revenue and expenditures of $3,388,746. The E911 Fund is used to account for the operations of the 911 Center, all dispatchers and related equipment located within the 911 Center. The E911 receives emergency calls, dispatch relevant calls to provide Pickens County and the city of Jasper, public safety units to respond to those calls. And they manage a large volume of both emergency and non-emergency calls, including the individual that just left that gets 19% of those calls. Their E911 Fund is $1,749,901. Our 2020 SLOSS Fund, the reason that we call it the 2020 SLOSS Fund, it was approved just before 2020 took effect, and the collections began in 2020. It is a 1 cent, 1% sales tax levy. It's a six-year SLOSS that was approved by Pickens County voters in 2020 and remains in place through the end of 2026. Can be utilized to fund capital outlay projects proposed by the county and by Pickens municipalities, but cannot be utilized to fund general operating expenditures. There are limits to what it can be spent on. 155 out of 159 counties currently impose a SLOSS tax. If you take a look into the SLOSS Fund, you can kind of see the totals that are there. The County Public Works Runway accounts for 43.35%. That's $2,673,250 for the 2025 amount. That excludes any LMIC funds that are used as a state grant that we received for paving roads. That was for $668,000. The municipal allocations is 18.2% at 1.1 million. Parks and Recreation, 10% at 616,000. The Airport Enterprise Bond was approved at 9.45%. That's 582,000. Both the Sheriff's Office and Fire and Rescue both account for 8% each at 493,000. The County Water Department receives 3% at a fund of 185,000. Those total $6,166,167. You can see to date in '25, those have, 5 million of that has been received, so 81.8% has been received. And we'll do a little deeper breakdown in this SLOSS. You can kind of see this in a pie chart to see where those monies come from. One of the reasons for the T-SLOSS being on the ballot in this past election was because you can see that 43% that's in the roads category, we were trying to do all we could to free those up to go into the other funds that are in there as well. So all the different improvements to Parks and Recreation, Water, and other items within that service without having to allocate the 43% to roads, that would have freed those funds up to go into others. Unfortunately, it came up just shy at the finish line, but we will continue to operate and work with the best that we can to make that happen. This is a view in the format of a dollar to kind of show you those same percentages, 43% going to roads, 18 going to municipalities, 9.45 airport bond, then going to parks and rec, and then the 8% both for Sheriff's Office, Fire and Rescue, regional water. Looking at all of those different budgets kind of on one slide, you can see here the General Fund and the Water. I'm not going to repeat the numbers over and over again, but this is just going to give you a different viewpoint on one slide to show you each of those and where they all categorize and fall in. The four other county funds that are referenced before that are not considered to be the major funds, but they are other county funds, or not major, significant. The four other funds are the Family Connections Fund, it's $40,000 that's received and go out. Hotel Motel Tax Fund, $300,000 is expected to be generated. The Jail Construction Fund consists of $40,000. And the Sheriff's Office Speed Detection Fund is $100,000 is what's allocated into that budget totaling $480,000. Any funds that are raised within those come from those categories, and the expenditures would match up. Whatever funds are received have to be spent in the manner in which they're allowed to be spent within that category. That kind of gives you each of the six significant county funds and the four other funds. General Fund Details, taking a look at the highlights of the proposed 2025 budget. There's a full property tax rollback, so as the millage rate was accounted for, as defined by the law, a full property tax rollback was there. There was no millage increase. There was no use of general fund balance. We were able to maintain a balanced budget without the general fund balance. The 7.47% increase in revenue due to real growth tax effect, sales tax, and service revenue. 7.47% increase in expenditures due to increases in salaries, health insurance, FICA, retirement, other insurances. Court program funding and airport funding. Most agency and departmental budgets remain the same net of salaries, FICA, retirement, health insurance, and other insurance. Uniform cost of living, so across the board, using a uniform cost of living increase for $2,000 for employees is factored into the budget as well. General Fund Details and Revenue, just to kind of give a breakdown of the types of revenue that are there. We've got the tax types, real property tax, local option sales tax. The other taxes, always cracked up before that you saw the other taxes category, and people would ask what that was. Here's what the other taxes are. The railroad equipment taxes, franchise taxes for cable, local option sales tax, alcohol, beverage, excise tax, local option mixed drink tax, insurance premium, taxes, financial institution taxes, motor vehicle title, abhorrent tax fee, motor vehicle prior, heavy equipment tax for the current year, intangible taxes, and record real estate transfer taxes. So in order to record this. Those are the other taxes that make up the other tax category. So when people sometimes ask that question, we wanted to make sure that includes. This kind of gives you a pie chart that shows the millage rate of Pickens County government over the last 10 years. You can see that there was a period of growth from 2015 to 2016. And since then, there has been a steady decline in the millage rate. It's been consistently rolled back and has gone through for that period of time after that one period of growth that occurred. Proposed Revenue Budget, this is to kind of show you the same categories in to help you understand where all the funds come from. Real Property Tax, funds 41.24% of this budget. Other Taxes form 21.08% of the budget. Local Option Sales Tax is 14.06%. Charges for Services is 11%. Intergovernmental Revenues is 9.3%. Licenses and Permits is 1.85%. Other Revenue, 0.7. Fines and forfeitures is 0.59%. And any use of fund balance is 0% because we have no use of fund balance factored into the budget. Showing it in a pie chart format, just to kind of give you the similar breakdown to see where those percentages are. You can see that the real property is combined with the local option sales tax, both account for just over half of those forms of revenue on all county expenditures. This gives you a view in that same dollar format to show for every dollar, 41 cents of it is coming from the real property tax, 21 cents is from other taxes, and using the same percentages to play that out where you can see where those come from. 2025 Proposed Revenue Budget, if you would take a look at that in comparison between the 2024 budget and the 2025 budget, you can see the increase from 15 to 16.5 in real property tax. Other Taxes went up 300,000 from 8.1 to 8.477. Local Option Sales Tax is fairly similar from 5.54 to 5.65. Charges for Services actually only went up $7,000 from 4.4 to 4.97. Intergovernmental Revenues remain somewhat consistent. They did have a $700,000 difference there. License Permits went from 651 in 2024, 651,000 up to 744,000. Other Revenues increased slightly from 264,000 to 280,000. Fines and forfeitures actually went down in the budget from 270,000 to 235,000 to show a breakdown on all proposed revenue categories. We go into the expenditures just to see the breakdown of where those expenditures go. Public Safety has the lion's share of 49.04%. This includes all law enforcement, fire, 911, marshal service, animal control services, all are lumped into that public safety category. That's 49.04% at 19.7 million. Judicial Services, this is where I talked a moment ago about the increase on some of the judicial grants, but they are at 7 million, which is accounts for 17.49. That's all judicial services. That's not just Superior Court and programs that we mentioned before, but that also includes magistrate, probate, court of court, all of the other judicial categories that are funded in the budget as well. Public Works, which is our road department, they account for 11% of our budget at 4.4 million. Culture and Recreation's at 4.15% at 1.669 million. And Housing and Development's at 1.86%, 748,000. Health and Welfare is at 0.7%. That's $282,000 of the budget. You can kind of see the lion's share of the, from highest to lowest, is the way that that goes through the total.
The total proposed budget?
Here's that view in a pie chart as well so that you can kind of understand where the funds do go, that the vast bulk of that, which is consistent throughout the state, close to 50% go to public safety in funding all public safety operations. Same viewpoint in the dollar chart to show you how many cents of every dollar go into those categories. If we take a look at the proposed expenditures budget and the percentage increases from '24 to '25, you can see Judicial Services had that increase in 15.4%. It was also a significant increase when we looked into the revenue line items that came in from those grants and from other functions that go in as well. So that balances that increase out to be consistent with the rest. Culture and Recreation had an 8.5% increase, Public Safety an 8.46%. Overall, if you were to average out all increases from all departments, was a 7.47% increase. Public Works was a 3% increase. General Government was a 2.58% increase. Health and Welfare was zero. And Housing and Development actually reduced. There was one line item within Housing and Development that was transferred into another, so that's why it shows that reduction of 12.5. It also shows why the increase in one of the other lines went up. So if you were to look at the driver behind all of the increases to the budget from '24 to '25, the personnel driver, the amount, the bulk share, if you go countywide, all departments lumped into one, 74.6% is personnel-driven. It's personnel-driven whether that's broken down here to show you salaries, health insurance, FICA, retirement, defined contributions, workers' compensation. So 74.6% are salaries-driven, they're personnel-driven. Only 25.4% of the budget is non-personnel-driven for all the intangible items that are within the budget, that's 10 million. Those just kind of show the breakdown of how those are accounted for and factored in. If you take a look at the difference between '25 and '24, you can see that under public safety, there's a $1.6 million increase total across the board in public safety, and there is a $300,000 increase. Actually, I had corrected. $800,000 increase overall in all judicial services. I was thinking about one particular category within judicial had $300,000 increase, so that's why my brain froze for a second. General Government had a $200,000 increase. Public Works had an increase, actually a decrease of $1,000, or a little bit more than that. Went from 4.298 to 4.427. So slight increase.
Slight increase.
The more you stare at the numbers, the more that it becomes something that's difficult to go at. Slight increase with the way that one went through. Culture and Recreation went from 1.5 to 1.669. Housing and Development from 8.55 to 7.48. Health and Welfare went from held flat at 282,000 into both of those categories. Going back to our mission, that our mission is to provide a local transparent government, consistently focused on protecting the community, its values, while working towards value-driven growth and the greatest quality of life. So we want to make sure that we're providing that information to everyone. I know this is a high-level overview of some big line item categories. We have a three-ring binder, as I said, that's in the county court's office. It's available for inspection anytime during office hours. You're welcome to come by and take a look and go through it. You're also welcome, when you do go through it, if you want to ask any individualized questions, I'll be happy if I'm here to sit down and try to help explain anything that's there. With that, and with the high level of what we've presented, I would love to open up the floor for any questions anybody might have or comments that anyone might have. We'll definitely take those both from the board. We'll definitely take those both from the board and from the crowd as well.
Can you start over?
Yes. Take a breath. Y'all want this thing to keep lasting, we can keep it going.
No, sir.
Any questions or anything that anyone has?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the three ring binder. Is there anywhere online that somebody who's not able to come physically would be able to find that?
We don't while it's still in draft form because there is the potential that it could be changed in the meantime between now and the approval of the budget. So we keep it in a physical printed copy at this point. And so it's there available in the office.
Makes sense.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Go once, go twice. How about anything on this front? All right, with that, do I have a motion that we close our public hearing and move on into the rest of our meeting adjourned?
So move.
I'll second.
Move to second. All in favor? We will move into our agenda of the remaining part of the meeting. The under old business, would you have a consideration and approval of our Board of Commissioners meeting calendar for 2025? We will stay with the consistency of our meeting work sessions on the first Monday and our voting meetings on the third Monday with the exceptions that were discussed during our work session because of holidays. We will move the January meeting to January the 22nd, our regular meeting would need to move to January 22nd on a Wednesday due to a holiday or, do we have it marked this week one we moved? There will be no work session in September due to Labor Day following the work session. And was it February was the other one that you had moved? February moved to Wednesday, the 12th because of the school break. Everybody will be out of town in the week of our regular scheduled meeting. We're trying to get that approved so that we make sure planning and development has the dates to provide whenever they're setting up their hearing, certain rezones that go through. I know that we discussed this here in the work session, but want to make sure if y'all had a chance to review and look at any changes. If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the meeting.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion to second. Any discussion or question? All in favor? Motion carries. Next items on the agenda is going into our new business category. Under new business, item A is consideration and approval of amendments to the defined benefits retirement plan through ACCG Retirement Services. This is a resolution on the defined benefits plan. The changes, the only two changes that are made within our current plan is to change from the rule of 80 to a rule of 70 for total points required and then to move the age, minimum age from 55 to 52. The rest of all plan details remain the same. It's just making the change within the defined benefits plan. These are for all employees that were here prior to 2016 that are under the defined plan before it changed over to the defined contributions plan. I guess I'll ask for a motion first so that we can get it to the floor for any discussion or questions that y'all might have. To have a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign any documents necessary to make the changes.
So move.
Second.
We'll move in a second. Are there any questions or discussion that you guys have related to that? We've got no questions. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, but motion carries. Next item on the agenda is similar, but it's for the defined contributions retirement plan through ACCG Services. And that's the match program for employees that make contributions and the county does provide a match. The only change to both the 457 and the 401 defined contribution plan would be to increase the match that the county provides instead of the 2.5% that's matched at this point to up to a 7.5% if employees were willing to contribute up to 7.5% that the county would match for their retirement in that plan as well. Similar to the one before, if y'all are okay with it, I'll go ahead and call for a motion authorizing the approval of the resolution and authorizing the chamber, or not the chamber, authorizing me as chairman to sign any necessary documents. This whole budget presentation has got my mind jammed. Authorizing me as chairman to sign any documents necessary with the ACCG.
So move.
I'll second.
Good luck, Lisa, trying to figure it out right now. So with that, do any discussion or questions?
You want to read the entire thing out to us?
I probably should, it'd probably save us a little bit.
You're simply bumping the employee match from 2.5 to 7.5.
Yeah, any employee that wants to increase up to that 7.5, it would move the match to go with that.
That's tough. Good. Let's go.
Any more on discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, but motion carries. Next item on our agenda is consideration and authorization for the chairman to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Department of Transportation related to a water line relocation on Highway 136. The Georgia DOT has a project, a bridge replacement project that they have on their agenda. They don't have it what scheduled for an exact what date yet, but they do have a project that's there to change the bridge, it's there at Jones Mountain Road on Highway 136.
They're actually moving forward with that?
They are moving forward with it. There is a funding portion that is required for the relocation of the water lines. The total amount that will be the county's responsibility is $140,000. It does not have to be paid all at once, it can be paid in two separate as well months at 70,000, once they go out of the length of the project. So in 2025, that first portion should go out whenever that's there. Because of that, I felt like it was better to bring that before you guys as a board to make sure that you're comfortable and okay with agreeing to the county's required match portion so that that project can't move forward. We know that it's tentatively scheduled for a letting at the end of the year, but they've already announced that they're going to table the project. So those funds probably will not be paid in right away. It probably will sit for a little bit longer, won't move forward at all until we've signed the memorandum of understanding, agreeing for our portion of the project for paying for the utility relocation. And that's 40% of the total utility relocation cost on this thing. Any questions before we move, ask for a motion? With that, do I have a motion authorizing me to sign the memorandum of understanding with the Department of Transportation?
So move.
Second.
Move in a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Let me get all that information sent over to them and we can go through that. Next item on the agenda is our third quarter finance report. So y'all, if you have a break from me talking for a minute, we'll have Miranda go through and give us our third quarter finance report.
I'll be the same way. All right, so this is the third quarter finance report. We are a little late giving this, so. All right, first slide, this is our revenue. We should be at 75% or more. General fund, we're at 15,297,570, which is at 41%. Again, this is the quarterly, the third quarter, so property taxes and all the majority has not started coming in yet. Special revenue fund of E911, revenue of 453,848, that's 26%. Proprietary funds, that's water and airport, we're at 2,515,334, that's 54%. General fund revenue, taxes, 8,497,435, that's 30%. Licenses and permits, 556,320, 85%. Intergovernmental, we're at 2,848,467, 67%. 3 million, or charges for services, 3,568,592, 79%. Fines and forfeitures, 200,854, that's 79%. Contributions and donations, 16,863, that's 43%. Interest income, 15,794, that's 156%. Mislanias, 336,360, 129, 129%. And then other financing sources, 38,130, that's 149%. For a total revenue, third quarter, 15,297,570, which is 41%. As you can see, that's a decrease of 1% from quarter three to 23. All right, so this slide is just going to show you squashed proceeds in fiscal year '24 so far. As you can see, that's 12 months worth of proceeds that have came in. It's a steady incline. This also goes along with local option sales tax, it's also 1%. It kind of administers the whole, the scale. At the bottom is total revenue and expenditures for squashed. That is total from 2020 to 2024. Light blue is the revenue received and the green is expended. So as you can see, we've been completing projects along the way. 2024 squashed activity. Year to date, we have 7,635,313. Year to date expenditures, 6,697,124. As you can see, roads and streets, $3,009,000. And water, 252,000. Fire EMS and 911, 546,000. And then sheriff is 773,000. Airport debt is 368,000 and recreation 39,000. So this is year to date expenditures. So this is, kind of gives you an idea of what we've kind of accomplished this year and what's going on. Government, general governmental expenditures. Commission in general, we are at 2,53,309, that's 63%. Again, should be 75% or less. Elections is 340,956, 70%. Tax commissioner, 609,268, 68%. Tax assessors, 684,274, that's 75%. General government buildings is 572,398, that's 91%. In total, general government is 4,259,939, 69%. So as you can see, we're running under budget. Judicial expenditures, Superior Courts at 1,507,420, that's 75% of budget. Clerk of Court, 683,619, that's 71%. District Attorney, 364,953, 56%. Magistrate is 336,567, that's 59%. Probate Court, 443,52, 77%. Juvenile Court is 288,46, that's 67%. Public Defender, 442,224, that's 47%. For a total of 4,65,882, that's 66%, so 100%. Public Safety expenditures, all right, so sheriff is at 7,430,55, that's 77%. Probation and drug abuse is 235,433, that's 62%. Fires at 5,104,391, that's 79%. Coroner's at 50,065, that's 48%. Animal shelters, 300,716, 70%. EMAs at 140,461, which is 89%. County Marshal is 141,202, which is 63%. That's a total of 13,261,120, that's 73%. Public Works expenditures, Public Works Roads is at 2,285,063, that's 74%. Solid Waste and Landfield at 837,489, that's 70%. And public education, KPB, is 12,500, which is 100%. That's 3,135,052, at 73%. Health and welfare, health department's at 61,824, that's 75%. Health department regulation is 3,886, and that is 216%. I did look that up, that's gas and oil. Health department buildings, 66, that's 21%. Welfare's 7,822, 26%. Senior centers, 19,846,000, 19,846, 82%. Transportation, which is max, is 83,787, that's 60%. A total of 121,806, and that's 43, 43%. Culture and recreation, recreation center is 643,422, that's 75%. Swimming pool is 34,826, 77%. Program sports is 104,638, that's 79%. Library is 374,587, that's 75%. For a total of 1,157,473, and that is 75%. Housing and development, county extension service is at 50,772, which is 57%. Planning and development is at 326,434, 75%. Development Authority is at 49,108. And transfers to airport has not been completed, so we're at a total of 426,314, which is 50%. E911 is 1,091,225, that's 64%. Water department is 252,512,98, which is 83%. Airport fund is 1,172,37, that's 93%. For a total of 3,687,334, that's a total of 80%. I made some notes at the bottom. Water fund, they purchased a good bit more water, which is also offset with water charges and revenue. Airport fund expenses includes the one-time payment of 255,000 for the Jeep along where we paid that off. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
The same way that they asked, could I repeat everything?
We like our answer.
Oh, that's good. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it very much. Next item on our agenda under new business is the selection where our county currently conducts the 2024 audit. There were two proposals when we went out to bid for audits for 2024. We did receive a quote from CKH for 51,120 and a quote from Rushton, our current auditor, for 80,000. I've asked Bill if he would to kind of go through a quick presentation on staff recommendation for the audit services and the explanation behind their recommendation as well. So Bill, if you don't mind, give the floor over to you.
Thank you, Chris. We don't normally make this kind of presentation about this. There's always a staff recommendation on the. There's always a staff recommendation on this, I mean, we've only been through it one time back in '21. And I think all of y'all remember the experience we had with that, which has greatly influenced our thinking on this particular situation. But because this is such an unusual spread in the pricing of the proposals, usually these pricing comes in, and we'll show you an example from back in 2014, much, much, much in that regard. And so we have a recommendation and we want to basically get into the record sort of the foundation and the premise for our recommendation. We have a lot more details that you will not see tonight because of time and the kind of information that it is, but they're available to the extent that you want to meet individually on this, which can walk through, well, through all of it. But just on basically a little bit of our thinking, we'll start with the law and our enabling act. The Board of Commissioners shall own or before the final day of the month following the end of each fiscal year, serve as a public accountant as the county's performing auditor for the purpose of conducting an annual continuous audit of county finances and financial records. During the third year of the audit services of the relationship with the performing auditor, this is the third year of the relationship with Rushton, the county shall issue a request for proposal to choose as performing auditor for the following three years, with the current performing auditor to be allowed to submit a proposal for the following new three-year audit. You all know that this is a relative. You all know that this is a relatively new provision in the enabling act. The old provision had an automatic bar of four years. That was not followed in the past. It led to certain situations and that we basically had to deal with. But we thought it was better to basically do it this way, and you'll agree because you, 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 you basically enacted this. And so within that third year, now this is, we're going to show you the twenty-four pricing in this. This is a twenty-five budget item book. So because the audit will be formed, the audit firm will be paid in twenty-five. And our staff recommendation, notwithstanding the price, is Rushton. And so the purpose of the rest of this is to explain one. So we have Rushton and C K H. And we've basically have gone through several criteria to compare them, being the recommendation criteria that, that we're basically providing to you. And there are eight of them. We're going to quickly walk through the eight, both generally to, to, to basically note what they are and then to say a few things about each one as we actually apply it to the comparison. Number one, the lower price. Criteria two, the fit with Pickens County. Criteria three, the experience of the firm with Georgia counties. Criteria four, the firm's leverage. What this is, is basically the general composition of the firm in the accounting world as it relates to partners, managers, and staffing. That's very important to our thinking here, very important to the quality of the audit. And it plays a big role in this. And it basically, as you'll see a little bit later, goes right into a comparison of the Pickens project staffing, basically the staffing of the Pickens audit between the two firms and their approaches. The situation knowledge, the knowledge of the situation that we have to deal with here. And if it's a new person, how quickly can they come up to that? Handling complexity, and then we'll get into a little bit of that. And then what we consider the realistic price, which is a, a comparison to the lower price and a comparison of the two at the end of this. So we'll walk through these, all of them, they all play a role. And it leads to, all of them together lead to our recommendation. On the lower price, as Chris indicated, it's clear who has the lower price. On the fit with Pickens County, we give this to Rushton. C K H is a self-styled international firm with U.S. offices in Atlanta and Sandy Springs. The audit team that they have assigned to us is a seven-person audit team. Five of the seven people that have been assigned to the Pickens County, Georgia audit team, received their education, has spent most of their professional career working in a country that is very far away from here and a very faraway continent. They have one person that has done a bit of work in Florida as the sixth member of the team, but until recently, not much Georgia experience. And then they have a person that does have an educational connection to Georgia, in North Georgia. And we'll talk a little bit about that person when we get to the project staffing aspect of it. This is really not intended to be in any way a criticism of people who have worked and been educated abroad, far from it. But we have a duty to make a recommendation to you guys as it relates to Pickens County, Georgia. This has nothing to do with what some other county has decided or may decide or anything like that. This is solely about Pickens County and it's our duty to evaluate these criteria with regard to you guys. On the other hand, Rushton is a Georgia firm through and through, headquartered in Gainesville. They have been around doing audits in North Georgia since nineteen eighty-one. All of the people that'll be on the team are from Georgia, live in Georgia, work in Georgia, understand Georgia to the T as it relates to conducting audits. C H K indicates in the materials, they were formed in two thousand and three. They also intend, insinuated in the materials that they started doing government work and conducting audits in two thousand and twenty-three. So they just haven't been around long. And so there's that aspect, but particularly compared, compared to the Rushton situation in eighty-one. In terms of the Georgia county's experience, keep in back your mind the two thousand and three versus the nineteen eighty-one on this. C H K has provided five references to the county. There's only one county in their references. Slay County, Georgia, about forty-five hundred people. There are three municipalities that they've offered as references. Two of them are extremely, are very small. And there's one South Carolina concern they've offered as a reference, which is basically a council of, of local government, sort of like Northeast Georgia, North, Northwest Georgia, those kinds of things. We've also determined that they, that they do conduct the audit in Telfair County, twelve thousand people or so. They didn't provide them as a reference. And they do accounting and bookkeeping for Brooks County, not an audit, but for full disclosure, we thought we should basically describe to you everything that they do with a particular county. And that's counted about sixteen thousand people and they do that. Rushton provided the following five counties as rest, as references. Bartow, Barrow, Banks, Franklin, and Union. They also do audits in twelve other counties, such as White, Athens Clark, Consolidated Government, Carroll County, and, and it goes on. So the hefty experience there is striking. And we, we cannot make a recommendation to go with one set of experience versus the other set of experience under the circumstances. The other thing about Rushton is, is you know, we've got a water department that, that basically runs from this organization, fairly complex organization. And Rushton does the water and sewer authority work for Cherokee County, Kaweta County, Fannin County, and also the Adewah Authority as well. So there's that experience. So experience-wise, there's just no comparison, in our opinion. Then we get, we also give Rushton the edge in the firm leverage approach. And this is basically the competition, composition in the way they approach business. And I'll keep this one short. Partner time is very important in a situation like this. Manager time is very important in a situation like this. And then you've got staff and rest of it, and staff does valuable work. And there's certainly a place for staff, but it's the right mix. The C H K firm has four partners, fifteen people at the management level, and a hundred and eighty-one staffing. That is a ratio of two percent partner to the overall situation. Rushton has six partners, seventeen managers, and twenty-four staff people. Twice the leverage rate on the partners, twice the leverage rate on the managers, and then very low rate compared on, on the staff. And this shows up as we get to the, to the project staffing. C H K proposes an audit of five hundred and thirty-nine hours. Twenty-seven partner hours, ninety-six manager hours, four hundred and sixteen staff hours. That's seventy-seven percent staff hours, twenty-three percent partner and manager hours. Rushton proposes forty partner hours to twenty-seven, a hundred and forty manager hours to ninety-six, and only two hundred and sixty-two staff hours to four hundred and sixteen. So we at the staff level have to give the nod strongly to Rushton on that because of our interpretation of what that means in terms of the relative hours being spent by different kinds of people with different experience. Now, just one more on that, and then we'll wrap this up quickly. The C H K materials are a little bit confusing. Sometimes they talk about having three partners on the job. Sometimes they talk about having two partners on the job. It's probably two because that's the number of partners they list in their audit practice. And then they put two managers on it, two staff people on it. And the seventh slot goes to a project manager who the materials indicate is a bill as a business development person. I'm not really familiar with the concept of the project management with business development type in the technical audit. And I've never seen it before, even though I come from that world, but, but, but it is. The two partners have CPAs, they're certified public accountants in the United States. The managers are not, the staff people are not. The managers are chartered accountants in that faraway country. And I'm not disparaging chartered accountants versus CPAs, but to the staff here, that makes a difference. Rushton has three partners assigned, all CPAs. One manager assigned, all CPAs. Three staff assigned, no project manager, no business development person. Three staff assigned, at least one being a CPA. The situation knowledge, Rushton's been here three years, they know it inside and out. They followed a very difficult situation, eight years with a prior audit firm. A lot had to be cleaned up, that's all on the public record. And there's no point visiting other than the fact that when it comes to the situation and handling complexity, the three years they've been here mean a lot. So, we get to the realistic price. This is the C K H bid for twenty-four, fifty-one, one-twenty. Let's roll back ten years to the prior audit proposal that, that was in fourteen before the prior firm, the Rushton, came. Fifty-three thousand was one bid, which is more than the bid ten years later. Fifty-three oh three-three was more than the bid ten years later. Fifty-three four-hundred was, was more than the bid ten years later. Fifty-four thousand was more than the bid ten years later. There's two points to this, the fact that two years ago, there was that pricing. And then also look at the compression on those versus what we have now. But an average inflation rate of two-point-eight percent since those bids were issued in two thousand and fourteen, a dollar then was worth a dollar and thirty-six cents now. And so when we look at that, we have to give the realistic, the price advantage to Rushton or C K H. We think the realistic price is, is, is much more important than the lower price and therefore they get our recommendation. And the only thing that I'll say, just to close, is this. An audit for an accounting, for, for a county, even a small county like this, is not a commodity service. It deals with complexity, it deals with a lot of things, a lot of history, a lot of knowledge is required. And partner time is very important, manager time is very important, and so it's not a commodity. And even though it's not, you know, it's just a parallel, but it just, just closed out the thought, neither are legal services. Partner time is very important, senior associate time is very important. Issues they have to handle are often very complex, and neither are those professional services a commodity. And sometimes there's pressure to treat it as such. Sometimes historically, a lot of places is treated as such, but we haven't done that. And so this is another instance of, of that. So that's the basis for our recommendation. And we had to go into that just because of the disparity in the enterprise.
Do you have any questions for Bill?
Do you think you can go over it pretty well?
Thank you, sir. So with that, I know that in, anytime you have a bid, I think the, the assumptions always look only at price. I think staff wanted to make sure that they gave a thorough breakdown of, of how they've reviewed that and how they've compared it. With that, I'll open up the floor for a recommendation to follow the staff's recommendation of approving Rushton to serve as the auditor to conduct the twenty-twenty-four audit.
So moved.
I'll second.
Have a move in a second. Any discussion or questions?
I thought about making a motion the other way just to watch Bill fall over the floor. We'll go with it.
Yeah, who would have fallen first, her or me?
All right, so we have a move in a second. No further discussion, all in favor? None opposed, that carries. We'll get the, the paperwork process to get them rolling on the twenty-four audit. Best be up there. Next item on the agenda was the amended item that we did add on, the consideration and approval of allowing the development authority to transfer escrow funds into a primary account. There was an escrow account that was established many years ago in the development authority. It's half made up from contributions from the city, half from the county, and it was to fund the economic development portions. The total dollar amount of the accounts at forty-six thousand, when half of that was contributed by the county up until, I believe it was six years ago, half of it was contributed by the city. They have submitted a request that they close that escrow account and move those funds just into their general development authority budget account. With that, I would like to ask for a motion that we allow the development authority to transfer those funds into their general fund account.
So moved. Sir?
Move in a second, any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed, much cares. Under our action items, we do have two sets of minutes. One is our regular meeting on October the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. The second is our work session on November the fourth, twenty-twenty-four. I know each member was present either in person or via the telephone for both and that the minutes have been provided to each member of the board to review prior to coming in tonight. Hopefully you've had a chance to review those. And if so, I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve both sets of minutes.
Making a motion to approve those sets of minutes? I'll second.
With the motion and a second. I've been wanting to do this for four years. Now, I won't point out, it's a misspelling of Ms. Davis's name. I missed it till just now. I've never caught her making a mistake in a set of minutes in four years. And I glanced down as I was about to say it. So with the amendment correcting Ms. Davis's name on the minutes from the October twenty-first, would I like to call a motion to approve the amended minutes?
So, wait, do I have to withdraw my last motion? I withdraw my last motion and second your motion.
All in favor? Motion carries, minutes are approved. I, it took four years to finally get one back.
We'll just say it's four years.
I have to say. Now, I'm never gonna hear the end, and I called it out on that one, but I had to. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to reappoint Mr. Ryan Keeter serving on the Pickens-Gilbert Joint Development Authority. His term is just expiring, so this would extend to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven on the joint authority between Gilbert and Pickens. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Keeter?
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed, Mr. Keeters. All right, next item is under action items, we have one rezone request coming before us tonight. It's a rezone of parcel one nine zero eight one three, actually it's parcel zero six eight one one three zero zero three, rezoned number one nine zero eight one three. From four eighty-nine Harway Trail in Ball Ground, Georgia, Missydi Petty has applied requesting to rezon one point five three acres of a twenty-one point six five acre parcel from Ag to rural residential. The purpose of her request upon time of application was, if approved, to sell the lot with the existing residential structure that sits on that one point five acre parcel. Public hearing was held on the fifteenth of October in which the planning and development staff recommended approval. The planning commission voted for yes, is here or no to recommend approval as well. With that, do I have a motion from the floor?
A motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion or questions? All in favor? Motion carries, none opposed. That leads us to guest comments. Do you have any guest comments?
I do, if we can go back a couple of minutes. We had a voca audit today for the district attorney, spoke the grant, and two different auditors committed Pickens County on the minutes and how they're written and how easily they could read them. So kudos to you guys.
It has taken four years to find one thing, so it's, it's mine. I just want to show that I read them, I got to point out that I do extra study.
They just loved, they kept going back to it, they loved the format and how thorough it was broke down.
Good job. Lisa does do amazing, she does. Any other public comments? With that, I would like to entertain a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing, uh, property and also to consult with legal on pending or potential litigation. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion, all in favor? We will go into executive session at this time. Anyone that's here is welcome to stay until we come back.